Cody here. Kelly Boggs. James Hurstow. Emily Hibbert. Michelle Dora. Gregory Cava. Alan Brown. Tony Bedini. And Valerie Anderson.
Miraculously here.
Yes, yes, yes. Where you been?
All everywhere. So we're missing Kelly and Mike. Um, moving to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to take anything off of the consent agenda? No one that the consent agenda is approved? The board chair, no? Superintendent's report?
Oh, okay. Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. Just give me one second to get my act together. Trying. Okay. Correspondence. I did, um, put in your packet, and I'm going to give you an overview, 4.3 also, of Fletcher Thompson Arcade's update. But in your packet, I thought it was good for you to have, because this has come up at many meetings, there is a letter to superintendent of school and office managers for a new policy that has come into, um, new regulation, I should say, um, from, um, school construction and cost estimates. And I think it's just really important that everyone may just look through it over so that you're aware of the policy and you understand the importance of getting, um, real numbers before you go to a referendum. So if it just, just so I can read a little bit of it. A professional cost estimate of such project or phase of any site acquisition in such manner as the commission may prescribe when you are looking for a school construction grant. Uh, on or after January 1st, 2014, when your, cost of your project is over $2 million, you are required to submit project cost estimates in accordance with Level 3 of the American Society for Testing and Materials and Standards. Cost estimates shall be completed by a licensed architect or certified construction cost estimator. A unified cost estimate will allow for a detailed analysis of school construction cost estimates and construction cost management, as well as allow school construction grant data to be collected and analyzed in accord with construction cost estimates and construction cost management. And then it says, the last sentence, the cost estimate shall include columns listing all eligible and ineligible school construct, construction costs. So if you read it, I'm not going to go through the whole thing, but it really talks about what we have to do to follow, um, state policies and laws so that if we have a project, we could be reimbursed by the state. So I just wanted to give you that information.
I assume that people that are hired are taking care of it.
Yes, absolutely. Professionally done. We are in compliance, which is very important. We do have some resignations. As you can see, we have Anita LaPresti from Grade 5. Charles Calabrese, a custodian at WPS. We have a new custodian, Adam O'Neil, who was the security guard out here and is now moved up in the world and is a custodian at WPS, so that's fun.
Who is, excuse me? I noticed there was no security guard here tonight. What are we doing at night?
You know, there's somebody there. I think he was walking around the building, because I saw his stuff. Did you see him? He talked to him, yes. Um, and then we have Joan Temple, who's on a leave of absence. Okay? We did send information. There is a legislative breakfast at Education Connection on January 23rd in the morning, I believe it's 8:00 AM. If you'd like to go, Debbie will be happy to register you, so just let her know. You know, there will be, um, people from the legislature here at the breakfast where you can talk to them and different, um, issues that are affecting you or the region, et cetera. Fletcher Thompson Arcade's update. So we have...
Can I just ask a quick question?
Yes.
Because I was trying to get the information of the, and I notice on the consent agenda, and I'm just, like, totally exhausted right now, so maybe I'm not too sharp, but there are no minutes of the previous meeting.
You know what?
Yes.
We had minutes. I noticed that myself. I gave it to my hand out.
Right. What happened was with, we got a little discombobulated with the holiday, and the minutes weren't available for the, um, the mailing. So we, um, did not put them in the packet.
They are in the packet.
But they are, yes. And we thought we'd put it on...
And they're on your machine.
Yes.
And then they're not online. Just as a gender, that's what we're doing.
I don't know how I got this. Are you, is it different on that?
It's in the drive.
If you, like, down and it's...
It is in machines, yeah.
So, so what we were going to do is just hold, give you copies of the minutes, but not approve them until the next meeting, um, so that this way, um, you have them.
I'm sorry about that. I had to pass them over here.
Okay. So I'm giving you a couple of different schedules that I'd like to talk about. We had a very productive meeting today with the architect and our, um, project manager. And, um, we went through the timeline and the calendar from now till April 8th, uh, the proposed date for the referendum. Um, we have, I'll just quickly go through it with you so you have an idea. On January 18th, we are going to have Saturday morning, a 10 o'clock, um, Future of Education conversation at WPS. We wanted to do that for anyone who couldn't make the other three meetings, or any seniors who felt that maybe it was too late to come out at night. We will make sure that we do a real, um, a good job of publicity to make sure everyone gets that information. And again, it's just a listening conversation with the architects, with the, uh, project manager. On January 23rd, um, at 3:45, we are going to have another meeting with the staff and the administrators and any staff member from, um, the schools, um, to again, get their input, to, um, look over some of the ed specs, which, um, we have been working on to try to finalize size and stuff, and to get their input, uh, again, with the architects and the project manager. On January 27th, which is our next board meeting, and that probably should say 7 o'clock, but it doesn't matter. It says 6:00, we can, I can fix that. Um, we will have the architect and the project manager here to give you an update, um, on progress so far. They will talk to you about what they have done so far with the drawings and the conceptual designs. They'll talk about, um, the ed specs and how they are trying to, um, make them a little more amenable to get the square footage down a little bit, um, and answer any of the board's questions. On February 4th, 5th, and 6th, we will be, they will be doing with, uh, me too, and any board members, you can talk about that, who wants to be present, public information sessions, um, with the public in each town. And on that Saturday in the morning, we'll do the same thing at Chapaud at 10:00 AM. Those will be, um, sent out in a flyer, a mailing, to all residents, so let them know to come hear about what the plans are at this point, um, and what they've done so far. And that will include not only pre-K to 5, that'll also include repairs at Chapaud. Okay? So that bad information will, um, go out. And then, from all of the public information and the information with the staff, administration, the board, on February 24th, um, Fletcher Thompson will be here to give you their draft of the conceptual design and cost estimates. That's on February 24th. What they're asking for is, and they'll tell you this, for you to email any questions you have about the designs or any input, I mean, we'll have a conversation, but anything that happens after that, so that, um, I've scheduled two special meetings. March 3rd and March 6th of the Board of Education. We're hoping on March 3rd, um, that the board will approve after they've made revisions from your input, um, the conceptual design and cost estimates that'll go to referendum, uh, the draft of the referendum questions, uh, as developed by the bond council, including amendment of the plan, the new pre-K school, and repairs to Chapaud. If that doesn't happen on March 3rd, we'll come back March 6th, then hopefully we'll be able to, um, get the board to, um, make a motion and pass that motion for board approval. And then, uh, if that happens on March 8th, we will do a, another public meeting with everything that has been decided, and then that will give us, um, the 30 days window, where we have to, there's like a...
A call of silence.
Call of silence. Thank you. Thank you, Bob. We appreciate that. Um, so you're aware, if we do not get the adoption, the board approval by March 6th, we will not be able to have the referendum April 8th. We'll have to move it into May. Okay? And this is, we did our best. If there are mistakes, I certainly will make changes. But this is one thing, maybe I, there's a question, maybe we should do the talk about this one, then we'll get something else out.
I, I'm sorry, because I'm sure you said this, and I was just reading dates or something.
I may not have.
But for the public information sessions, February 4th, 5th, 6th, and 8th?
Yes.
I just, when I read that, I was just assuming that the design was going to be presented, and then I saw that that was afterwards. So what, what is the...
There will be, at that point, there will be three conceptual designs shared with the public.
Oh, okay.
I should have mentioned that, I'm sorry. And at that point, they will be conceptual designs, they will be, uh, we already have had the, um, work done on the landscaping and the site work. So you will have, at that point, three conceptual designs, um, that, and I believe they're going to try to have that for you on January 27th also.
Okay.
Okay?
But they, any thoughts associated with that, or no?
Uh, the cost and stuff will come February 24th.
Okay. Thanks.
He summed together the minutes of December 16th.
What date, I'm sorry?
December 16th.
Yes.
Sadly, I was not able to attend. And this schedule, I'm reading that you have to do two separate questions to the public, right? And some of the constituents are either taxpayers or property owners. So where in this plan does the general question get asked?
They're both done, it's two questions, but it's on the same day.
And how are we going to, um, let two different classes of voters?
The, I, I had a meeting with the selectmen, and both the Roxbury and the Washington selectmen have said they have done it in the past. They've done it when board members have been, um, elected and budget have been elected, so it can be done. We will work with the town clerks. If we have to, um, help the town some way, we will. If they need, uh, additional, um, voter registrar...
But how do you restrict...
There's a list.
Classes.
There's a list.
They have lists in town.
They have lists.
If I may, for example, in Roxbury, I was told voter went into the booth and voted as usual, there's a very small number of folks who are allowed to vote on one, but not the other. They just go down the hall into another room, there's somebody there, they vote on the other question.
Oh, well.
That's how, I mean, they said it was done.
And you already fixed the question, the general question, on December 16th. So we know the wording is...
No, we have not fixed the question. It was quite, it was a motion made, it was lit on the table, uh, so we had, and that's on the agenda though, to get it done. We're going to have to do that.
Okay. So that's this. Sorry. Okay, now I'm going to hand you, um, the other thing that I put together, tried to get some stuff done, is, um, from now until July 14th, I moved this summer organizational meeting back a week. We can always talk about that if it's not appropriate. But I gave you a list of all of the business and education meeting topics from now until the end of the school year, so that you can get an overview of the things you're going to learn about and, and hear about. And, um, I have my evaluations in there. Um, I have the AP scores in there, um, someone asked for that. We have, um, information about, um, we have students coming in who are, um, involved in virtual high school, students with their Chromebooks. We're going to have the Academy 21 students coming in. Um, at the end of the year, they, um, we'll have the State of the Schools. It has the district budget hearing in here. So everything's in here, um, and I'm hoping that, um, this will be helpful for everyone. Okay? So that's that. And then the only other thing I have here, I, I'm going to ask, again, we're a little, it's, oh, it's my fault. This is a draft of the school calendar, which we have on here as, um, four, not four, 7.3, and I'd like to table that till next month, but I wanted to give everyone just the draft of the calendar. And what you will notice in the, um, new teacher contracts, um, I was given the, uh, opportunity to have the flexibility of having between 182 and 184 instructional days. And next year, due to all of the, um, NEAS coming and, um, the new S-Back testing and the new teacher evaluation and Common Core, we felt the administrative team that having 182 instructional days would at least be better for next year. So I took away all of the half-days except for the one in May, right before Memorial Day weekend. And so there are no, there, we lost three half-days, but we have two additional full days. And then the only other thing I did for next year is I gave Chapaud two additional half-days because of the NEAS visit in March. So I'm happy to answer questions, um, if you want to email me them, but I'll get you a colored copy in the next board packet, but I wanted you to at least see it.
Um, I can't remember what year it starts, the state's uniform calendar, whatever.
1516.
1516, okay. And it, wasn't it, didn't they say it was going to be phased in so that the, like, at first you only had to follow the start and end or something?
They, they, it's not that it's phased in, they've kind of like, um...
Rejoined.
Yes, and reevaluated some of the things they were talking about.
Okay.
So what they're hoping is to have beginning start dates similar, to have, um, the winter holiday break and the spring holiday break similar, and to have similar PD days. So that's what they're looking at, but it's still really in committee, it's...
All right. So we didn't have to do...
No.
Okay.
And I believe, that's my part of my, uh, presentation, but tonight we have, one of our, my goals that we've been talking about for a year is the vision and mission of Region 12. We have worked, uh, Emily Judd has taken the lead, um, with parents and staff and, and board members and, and just trying to get a real handle on what we're about, why are we here, where do we want to go? And so she's here to do a little activity, a little presentation, a little activity with the board, and I think, um, I'll introduce Emily.
Okay, thank you. So thank you for having me here tonight. My hope tonight is to share...
Are you going to present on this?
Um, yes. But we can move it for the moment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where do you want that?
Please do that. Thank you very much. Um, so my hope tonight is to share with you the process that we use thus far in working through the vision and vision, um, and to provide you with an opportunity to look at some of the draft work that we have constructed regarding the vision and mission, and to have a little bit of your input, um, included in the process. So I know it's really hard to do a little interactive work tonight, but I'll try my best to get it as early as possible. So I first want to start out with the process. Last year, we were able to have some early release days in June, and at that time, we took that opportunity to get all of the staff together, which included the administrative team, um, all of the teachers, and also support personnel as well. So what we did during that, um, opportunity is we grouped them in small, uh, sessions, and we provided some essential questions to help them reflect on their beliefs and values about their work that they're doing here in Region 12. And so from that day, we got really, truly, very thoughtful responses that we were able to put into some forms in terms of a, a vision and some mission statements. And then over the summer, the leadership team and some instructional leaders worked together to analyze that information and begin to synthesize it, because you can well imagine how much information would come from all of those groups. And then we were able to come up with, um, at least one to two vision statements and several mission statements. And then from that point, we went back to the leadership team and all of the instructional leaders in the district, and we were able to, uh, then construct from all of that information, one vision and six mission statements. That information went to a parent group, which is one of the monthly meetings that has with the, uh, district PTOs. And they helped, um, talk through that in a process that I use, which is a conversational cafe, where they really had dialogue about the mission statements and the vision statement. And from there, you know, back to the, um, leadership team. And we now have tonight one vision statement and one mission statement. So, um, I know Jen was part of that process, so hopefully you'll see some of your work, you know, involved in that. So, um, I think the reason why we took a look at our vision and mission statement is because we are in a state of change, and not just this district, but really the education field is in a state of change. With the Common Core study and its new assessments, and we're all trying to figure out what is really our direction. So, um, really effective, you know, organizations take time to look at their vision and mission statement regularly, and this is a great opportunity for the region to do so. So I wanted to start, uh, sharing with you, to quote that, um, that I really attach to when I think of change, and it says that all human beings, our greatness lies not so much in being able to remake the world as in being able to remake ourselves. And I think that we, we have to take control of change and really look at it as a way to redefine ourselves. So when I think of change, I think of looking at it through a transformation. So I think change equals transformation. Reassessing where we are, um, redefining who we are, and reemboldening who we are. And I think that when you look at it through that lens, it makes sense to start with our vision statement. So that's in fact what we did. We moved into that process, and, um, we looked at essential questions that would help us come to a vision statement. And so the real essential question that you look at when you think about a vision is your future. You define yourself as what would we be like in maybe five years' term? What do we want to become? Actually serves as sort of a north star. It provides an organization with direction. So while I read this, I want you to think about, um, what words or phrases that you might see in this draft vision statement that evokes for you a sense of direction, a north star, maybe even evokes some emotion, because vision statements should be energized. So it states, "The Region 12 learning community teaches, challenges, and inspires all students to become courageous, creative, and compassionate individuals who are empowered by the knowledge, character, and perseverance to achieve their greatest potential within the global society." So be, looking at that and seeing if there are any phrases or words that really stand out to you, that really hone in on what are, like, what are directions, our north stars? So just take a few. Okay. And we can share out, and I think I'm going to move this, this point. Any thoughts?
Um, I had two, two, two phrases. "All students," and "Achieve greatest potential."
I thought the pleasure of the word courageous. That's the first thing that all instructors want their students to become is courageous.
Empowering them. Empowering them to love the rest of our planet. So you've got words to execute.
I like that, at least in this layout, um, the word individuals is right smack in the middle of the text, um, which gives it a good feature, because we're, um, we're in a great position to treat every student as individual, not as an aggregate number or as, you know, as any kind of number, which is so common with, uh, larger schools or with the way we're, we're, we're helped by, by data management, database work, but still we can't forget the significance of this vision statement.
I do appreciate "global society." I mean, Korean is this to get to me, but, but certainly, um, "global society," because we are connected.
"Global society" stood out to me too, but it also seemed really nebulous and vague. It didn't, I felt like as I saw that, I didn't really understand that. I'm very concrete. I like to measure things and I stop, and I don't know. I like the idea, I just don't know.
We had so many conversations about that "global society."
I'm sure.
I think it was, and if I may, I think it means, it says that you're currently actually a global citizen, so that's where we're going.
I think also too, what I know when we were talking about it in the PTO meeting was that, the idea of global society really kind of is, you know, you kind of take it as, you know, first you're talking about your school and your town and your community, and then your, your state, and then, and then really kind of extending that. I think that, that's what, one of the, the talks is that really, you want them to not just be mindful about their, but really just think about it globally, so you can get sort of, you know, just that way. So that, you know, your, your, you know, not just what you do with your neighbor, but what you do with them. Nothing else.
So being mindful of their point of reference and speaking to them. I have a problem with learning and teaching, because you're a learning community that teaches, or are you a teaching community that learns? So I just think that's a conflict of learning and teaching. But more importantly, you're varying your lead, as we say in the news this.
I think that last part really...
Varying your lead.
You're varying your lead. And the news this, the most important thing that we do here is empower by knowledge, and that's like, in the second, the second of three phrases. I mean, that should come forward.
The learning, the...
Empowered by knowledge is hopefully what we do here first.
There was some discussion, just to give you maybe context for the phrasing of learning community, um, when we think of a, um, learning community, we're kind of drawn from the work of, like, professional learning communities, which talk about people working together collaboratively to, um, complete a mission together. And I think that when we worked as a leadership team and with the staff, we felt that was first and foremost an important quality that drives the work, so that we come together first and foremost as a professional learning community that collaborates and works together to move a mission. So I think that's why it's first, um, and the other pieces kind of connect with it. That's just the background of that. Okay?
Well, once again, I think empowered by knowledge is what we do first, and to flip that arrangement.
Is the, is the vision, the final vision statement approved by the board?
No, this is, this is a draft.
I understand that we'll get to a final.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I think that's what... Yeah, we'll bring it to the board, too. Yeah. We'll also, we'll have a vision, we'll have a mission, and we're also looking for a, uh, like a motto or phrase, something. So when you said that vow, to me, that was like a great motto. You know what I'm saying?
But I'm wondering...
So it's just something, you know, we're not done.
I'm wondering though, if the next step will help clarify, I think, what you might be thinking, because the vision, remember, is what we hope... be thinking, because the vision, remember, is what we hope to become. So we're always looking for that future outlook. But the mission, you know, answers different questions. So the mission is what we come to do every day together. Why we exist? What is our purpose? And I think that that homes it right in to our focus every single day. This was not easy, because all of the information that we gained from the work that we were doing fluctuated back to visionary versus mission. And so I think Jen would be proud of this one, because we brought to the, for the parent group, six mission statements. And it was overwhelming. And really from that group, one of the messages that they kind of gave to us is keep it simple, keep it direct, hone it on three things. I think we have four here, but, so really why do we exist? What do we come to work every day to do? Improve student achievement. Build a collaborative learning environment. Develop productive citizens and engage in reflective practice. Now, a mission statement, if it's a really strong one, should say who? It should tell us the what, and it should tell us the how. And that's what we were aiming towards at this point, to identify who, the what, and the how. Okay? Let's reach reflective practice. That is the process of analyzing what you do, making changes, modifications, putting it into practice, coming back, re-analyzing the results. So it's that whole cycle of almost self-directed practice of teaching and learning. And for students, it's a self-directed practice of how they plan, put something into practice, reflect, adjust. So it's that whole process. So from here.
No, I'm sorry. Do you get that?
No.
It's the practice of being, it's the practice of being reflective. Aren't you reflecting? Do you think about things?
Never.
You gotta learn from your students.
Take a breath.
No, I think it's too amorphous. I think it's as a mission. I mean, I do think that we're missing, I like, I like the phrase life more learners, because we all are, should be. And reflective practice sends a little too teacher's speech and process, not a goal. Okay. Now, from these four pieces, okay? So we had a lot of information that we analyzed and synthesized. So there were so many great ideas, but many of them fell under these categories. And so what we decided to do is to take a look at each of them and begin to broaden the definition of them. So for example, improving student achievement. In order to do that, we have relevant and rigorous curricula and assessments. We need to have the acquisition and demonstration of essential skills and knowledge. And I put the comment for state standards in parentheses. Engaging learning activities that are authentic. We need to have activities that are high-level thinking and problem-solving that really get at the depth of knowledge. And then this sort of habits of mind, having students and any one of the organizations open to new learning, to create, to imagine, and to innovate. And then in order to have that process successful, always providing that effective professional development and teacher support, so that those pieces happen. So what we did is we took some of those ideas and now we touched into a category to further identify what we meant by saying improve student achievement. And then we did the same thing for building a collaborative learning environment. We looked at the fact that we need to promote collaboration, develop and demonstrate effective communication skills, and to actually encourage that flexibility in thinking. And then we looked at developing productive citizens and recognizing one's place in a global society and understanding this concept of interdependence, that we're all working together in some way, interdependently, to demonstrate a sense of integrity, empathy, self-discipline, responsible risk-taking, and perseverance. So all of those attributes that you see under those greater headings were all great ideas that the staff and leadership team and parents sort of want it somewhere. But it made sense to put them in categories instead of being separate items, because it kind of fit those categories. So that's how it happened. We went from lots of information, analyzed, synthesized, and then we brought it back out again. So that's the process where we're at at the moment. So what I'd like to do is go back to the mission statement and have some of your ideas come out in light of what that information shared. And be thinking about maybe how it emphasizes the who, the what, and the how, which is what a mission statement should do.
I'd like to hear some reflection on pulling in parents in the parental role to this learning. I think that's part of the, you know, so partnering, I think we're partnering.
That's just.
Partnering in the, partnering with parents, students, community. I like, I would prefer like to optimize student achievement instead of improve student achievement. A verb that means you're sort of continually pushing the balance, not just lifting up because it needs to be lifted, but you're pushing forward.
Are you going with the who as just the region volume? Do we want to be more specific than that?
More specific than region twelve?
Well, like expand on what exactly we mean by that, or is we good with region twelve and everybody takes it as him?
I'm good with region twelve.
Under the veil of that learning community.
Right.
It's a whole thing. No, that's a lot. I think it looks good. It's obviously a productive level.
I think what's in, what's in there, I think, is good. I agree with Susan's comment that I think improved is not too inspiring. And I think it needs to be more inspiring. But I tell you, the thing I don't like about, is this good, if this is the mission statement, I'm not sure it captures, grabs. I mean, I think everything that's in there is great, but it's not kind of a grabby, one phrase reason of why we're here every day. It's too diverse. It's all, it's got a lot of stuff in it, and that's the problem. It's not a, you need an elevator pitch. In fact, you need an elevator pitch in a building with two floors. You know, something you can nail quickly so people, at least that's my take on a mission statement. I'm not a big fan of these, but.
All right, anyone else?
A hook, yeah, that's.
It's not T-shirt material. We went, remember, six.
So I, it's really hard to get, because I think what you want to have, it should be simple, it should be something that you can remember, that you can say, that if you ask people in the organization, if you ask parents, if you ask teachers, and even if you ask students, that there's this sense of they know what they come to, to the work every day about. And I think that it was really hard to even narrow it down to what you see here, but I do appreciate your comment, and I do think that the staff and leadership team will also appreciate it.
Well, let me ask you a question. What's the one thing that if we fail to do it, we should just put a, you know, a fork in the whole process? We have totally missed the boat, we have absolutely not achieved anything. What's the one, can you, can you get it down? I'm not asking this just to be silly, I'm asking this because I think it's important. What's the one thing we can't fail to do?
That can't.
Well, that, that's too.
It's not there.
Yeah, well, that's, that's sort of.
Optimize achievement could be something for education.
Optimize, right. But the bottom line is though, I think that we also have, which is a really great thing, we have a staff that truly believes and values that character development is significant and that we need to develop people who are responsive, that show empathy, that have good habits of mind. And so that, although student achievement, yes, I mean, when we think about that, to omit that obviously would be significant error, but to keep it solely, I think, doesn't really speak to the kind of really staff we have here. They value that significantly. And I think that parents do as well, at least the people that I have been able to interact with. So we need to have a little bit more than just educating our students, because we do a lot more than that too. So that's just a comment that I know that has been sort of a theme as we've been doing this. Okay, so anything else? No? Okay. All right, so going back to Val's point is that when we think about the driving force, this last sentence talks about engaging in reflective practice. And that really responds to sort of this continuous concept of improvement. And it doesn't mean that we're doing this work. It means that we're continuously looking to make things better. And I always have this phrase sort of in my head that, you know, if you reach a sense of excellence, you actually are just good. So really excellence is a direction and not a place. And I think in order to do that, you have to engage in continuous improvement. And I think that that's a really important aspect of the work that I think Pat is doing in the district, and I think the work that the leadership and the staff are doing together, is that we're really engaging in that sort of dynamic thinking all of the time, trying to find ways to do, to do things better for our students and for our district. So this right here is in draft form, and it's going to go again before our staff. We're going to take a look at some of the things that you've shared as well, and I think there are some things that we can make some adjustments with. And I know that when we bring it back to the staff, there'll be more changes. So the end product that you're going to see, we'll probably go through more times before we will actually see it again.
What do you expect them like to?
Well, we're, I'll be working, I'm hoping to generate this kind of process through faculty meetings, so that we can speed up the.
Couple of months.
Yeah, it's got to be just school year.
No.
It has to be sooner than that.
Yeah, I don't think months, I think over the next.
More.
Yeah.
That's a double month.
I guess so. Yeah. Is that reasonable?
That's fine.
Yeah.
What you gonna do?
Michelle?
I just have a, it's kind of a question or a favor to ask of the committee, because I brought up just the board's policies, our mission and philosophy policies. And we have one called mission and functions, and one called philosophy of the schools, and we have goals and things. And I, and they have not been touched in forever. But I would love it if you could possibly just let us give the policy committee some guidance on where you think they dovetail, what should be tossed. I mean, they're much longer than what you have here. And if some of it still applies, do we just add this? I don't, I don't really know. I don't want to take it over, I'm thrilled that you're working on this, but I don't want to be, I don't want to have conflicting missions and visions out there.
No, we need to revise that. I think that that's part of the plan.
Great.
Our agenda tonight, our business meeting agenda, is that in our mission statement?
That we would be changing that.
Yes.
That is the current.
I don't know if that, that's the current. A vision or mission, I'm not sure.
Well, it's not.
Continually driving.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it hasn't been talked.
What's that on agenda?
That should be vision, I mean, mission.
And, you know, that's, that's a point I want.
This is a vision, more of a vision.
Yeah, that's where the struggle was, that we call things mission when they're really preshions and vice versa. So we really spent time defining them and really separating them.
And the issue also is the, you know, there's so many few people who even hear when that was done. Do you know what I'm saying? You should, there should be buy-ins to the vision and the mission.
So your vision is what you want, and your mission is how you get there, right?
Essentially, yes.
I don't think it's absolutely though, just as a side note, I don't think it's absolutely essential that you continuously change or improve your vision, mission statement, ones who may still apply, you can think that the general rule.
I think the best practice.
But it's worth looking at.
The best practice is exactly that last statement, is that it's really important to revisit and to recommit, because I think you get new people in, and they all have to be aware of your vision and mission and commit to it, because your vision and mission should drive everything, should drive your decisions, your resource allocation, all of those things. And so to really make sure everyone in the organization is a part of it and is committed to it makes things a whole lot, you know, successful. Good. Any questions?
Emily, thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Go home, be safe.
Go home?
Are there any further questions right now?
I'm done, that's all.
All right, thank you for that. Moving on, the committee reports. Alan, Communications Committee, any report?
We will meet in February for the first time.
Yes.
Education, Michelle?
We just got the new schedule of items from Pat and.
It's very thorough.
I don't know. Sorry.
Someone have an education connection person, personal terms. Facilities?
We're meeting, we're meeting coming up, right before next meeting.
Fine, against Valerie?
We met with auditor, Charles Heavens. We reviewed with his help, and of course Bob's, the June 30th. Yes. Twenty third, June 30th, 2013, and a few notes. Hopefully you all have this online. If not, please look at it, because we, this is very important. The auditor comes in May and June, just begins the audit. Basically, they've not found any issues or findings of any problems because of the good controls that exist in the central office and the cross-training there, that there are other people who do other jobs and they know each other. And he calls the staff, that is Charles Heavens, terrific. And we're fortunate to have a group that has this kind of cross-training and that we can ask questions very frequently. Of course, Bob is essential to that. And basically, the opinion of the audit was good and clean, very important in the auditing world. A couple of things, highlights. If you want to, you know, take a quick look, pages three through 10 is the management discussion and analysis, which gives the high point of the audit in the 2013 year. We are in fine financial position. As usual, we do spend a little time on what some people think is the smaller levels, the cafeteria, for instance. Let me just go straight to, without boring you too much, but these are always questions we have. Page, pardon?
Take your time, it's important.
Page 39. We look at how our school cafeteria is going, that is to say the cafeteria operation. Here we have full-time employees and because of our higher food costs and lower population, and the fact that is completely now, all costs associated with running the cafeteria are now included in the financials. We have run a deficit of $37,000. That is to say, in the past, some of the benefits for those employees have been in general benefits categories. Now we can see a picture of the entire, of entire operation cafeteria. So indeed, we do have a fund balance that has decreased. We have a fund balance of $77,000 with a year loss of $37,000, but there are certain key things that can be looked at, and perhaps we might make changes in that. We did just increase the cost of the lunch, the basic lunch, to $2.65. But it is a well-done operation, but we're going to keep our eyes on a few of those elements. Page 37, the town distribution. We are very fortunate to have three towns who willingly contribute, $21,355,000 along, that is also including grant money, state of Connecticut, a transportation grant, and some smaller grants, for our total income revenue of $21,355,000. We have remarkably had an increase in tuition income this year, because we have more students than we had expected. Let's see what happened to.
$95,000 is the current. $95,000 is the current tuition income?
Yes.
We, uh, we actually generated money because we had a special situation with 2015 with a student that we didn't anticipate. That we had this, let me call it a student and after, of course, the year, non-resident. So we realized that $68,000 over was projected. That student, in a special need, is gonna go away, but we didn't budget for it this upcoming year either. So it was kind of like giving notice for that last year.
Yeah, thank you.
So as a result, we'll be cutting bigger checks to our member towns. Now bear in mind, we've already made an allocation of 1% to, to our 1% fund of $213,000, which we have in our pocket for the, for our capital expenditures. This year, we will be giving, uh, $276,843,000 back to our member towns. The breakout is $64,000 to Bridgewater, $87,000 to Roxbury, $125,000 to Washington. So I think that in prior years, because we did not have such a reasonable amount of tuition income, we have not been able to do that. So this is, this is good news for the member towns. What else, uh, really good news is the pension plan. The pension has been doing so well, page 33, that we actually have overfunded it in the past.
By 3%.
Right. The past few years, um, our actuarial studies show how much we should put into the pension plan and, and expense to our district, a part of our operating budget. And this year, we actually can save perhaps as much as $170,000 in that contribution. A substantial amount of money because the pension is doing so well. And the, we are basically overfunding it greatly. And we have some leeway in the future as a result. So it's not just this next budget year, it's other budget years, partly because we have lesser staff, the market is doing very well, it's a well-managed pension fund. So we find ourselves perhaps with $170,000 in our pockets we hadn't planned on for the next budget year. Bear in mind, uh, another piece of good news is we have a 1993 bond that's going away in 2014 and another bond going away in 2016. So that gives us a lot more flexibility in debt service, but we do have a new bond thing that's going on. It's a wash, but it gives us that kind of, um, leeway to take on future debt. So I think the big highlight here is that we are in better shape in terms of tuition income. Uh, we are sharing with our member towns some money and we also have some leeway in our pension plan. And the auditor, as usual, thinks that we have a very, very well-run operation.
Thank you, Ms. Val. Any questions?
Any questions?
Uh, with regard to the change to the contribution to the pension plan, is that something that needs board action or?
No, it's, it's based on the actuarial, uh, we won't have a, we had in the past.
But you'll just deal with that.
Exactly. Up through the budget process, Jim.
Okay.
We also did review the, um, financial statements, our usual function, um, ending December 26th, in which we are tracking 5% versus 8. Did I get that right? Off the top of my head, sorry. But anyway, we're tracking well as we do year to year and, uh, in comparison to previous year at this time. Yes, it's 7.6% now versus 8.9. Right. So we're doing quite well.
So you recommend it needs to be approved as audit report?
Is that in our agenda for later?
Yeah, 7.
Okay, okay.
All right. And it's always a pleasure to see Charles here. And it's always a pleasure to have such a good auditor.
You'll prove it.
And the only kind of problem that other school systems, that other, other government agencies have is when you get into some, some of the smaller cash funds. That is to say, um, the high school, um, the elementary schools, all the cash that goes through the PTOs and the fundraising, but we have a very good system of accounting for that. He was very close with that.
Good, that's great, thank you. All right, no further questions? Okay, uh, thank you. We've heard the mission, the change in plan presentation, negotiation.
Uh, nothing to report.
I, I just want to state that the, the board at its last meeting approved a teacher contract, but it hasn't actually been signed yet. The teachers, I would sign it on behalf of the board after the teachers have signed it. It hasn't been signed yet, but I expect it will be signed shortly.
No, I, I know that there were some, uh, there was some back and forth with, uh, both sides on finalizing some language. And I know that held it up and I think the holidays kind of intervened when we were about that, that stage.
It's hard to deal with.
All right, Paulson?
Jim, I'm sorry, I forgot one essential thing, the kind of a little thing that we have to start concentrating on quite a bit, and that is the, uh, elementary school repair fund that now has a balance.
Page on?
Uh, well, actually, page 15 right now. At $458,000, we just put another $100,000 in there. So we have half a million dollars sitting in a fund that should be used. And Mr. Heavens pointed that out and we're all, I think, beginning to see that as a concern.
We had a committee on this, maybe we just need an ad hoc committee, but we, the lease, in its current form stipulates we have to spend a hundred thousand dollars a year on three schools. And obviously we have.
We just allocate.
Because we need to, we need to allocate, set aside $100,000. It's spent by a committee. That process came upon the rocks because the, there's supposed to be three board members, three people from the towns. The towns felt that they were happy with the way things were proceeding and didn't really want to spend any time on it. And as a result, we've, we've amended the lease. We're in the process of amending the lease. I just, I got back from council, a list of things and we need to finalize that so we can amend it. It's gonna be a different procedure going forward. And that's probably why we're where we are, because we haven't, we've been working on getting that done, to adjust the procedure. The procedure we had was fine, except that it was, it was a quiet committee because we weren't getting the full.
Well, they did go through it on initial time more than once. And things were done and if nobody's got a complaint, you know, I guess they, these are.
But this is how we got into trouble originally.
Right, right, right.
Because we had a lease and it says, once a year, we're gonna see what needs to be done.
We'll complain with the lease.
Pardon?
That's the thing is, we're trying to, Fallo, you're understanding, the original thing was we had to meet with the selectman or some municipal representative every year.
Right.
And they didn't, and we didn't, and it laid fallow. And then decades went by and then all of a sudden there's a big, well, however it was.
It was, it was a chunk of town.
It was a long time. Signed at things five years ago.
No, 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 not our time, that's the original.
And it took us three years to get that lease written because of the bad blooded, because it'd all been dropped by both sides. So we established the language in the lease so that this wouldn't happen again. And unfortunately, we're doing it again because even last time, as we worked on this, we kind of said, well, the selectmen are complaining, but they're the ones who didn't bother to follow up with this. And so we didn't bother for our reasons, it's never happened. So we're working on rewriting the, the lease already to remove them from their requirement.
No, no, that's not what it does. What it does is, is it allows the director of facilities to compile, revise, keep the list going, circulate it to them. If they don't object, we move forward on it. So the idea is, it gives them, they still have input, but what they didn't want to do is they didn't want to be involved in the day-to-day of actually constructing the lease by meeting and creating it. So they are feeling confident that our director of facilities is properly maintaining the facilities and that the, the region is handling the schools well and moving forward. So what we need to do is we just simply need to amend the lease to, to create and put in place the policy that everyone agrees we want to do going forward, which is how to handle it. Because they didn't want to, they didn't think that they were adding anything and they didn't think that they needed to, they felt it was moving properly. So it's not that we've, we're not doing anything. It's not that repairs aren't getting made and aren't getting scheduled. It's that we, we need to have a policy that we're actually following rather than the old policy, which is in the lease, is that we're not following, uh, because the participation isn't there. So we're really trying to.
Well, we're still sitting on half a million dollars unspent.
Well, no.
I understand that, but that's not, the point of the fund is not to create a fund and spend it. The point of the fund is to create a fund to make available the, the funds that we need to handle things that otherwise don't get done. And if maintenance is getting done and there are items on the list, you've got to remember, that list has been substantially.
Greg, the auditor recommended reducing.
You can't, you're contractually obligated to maintain it.
It's not to, it's not to reduce it, it's continually growing.
And not used.
We just have to put this process in place to tap into that. When you see the separate account, it stays in the separate account. And basically, you can't use it for operating costs. It has to be the board that takes action against that money. In other words, you can dissolve it, you can spend it, the lease says you have to put it in there. So we've been putting it in there. Now the question is, how are we gonna spend it to get it out of there?
Is there a way when we rewrite this lease in which some of the routine maintenance that, I mean, I'm not talking custodial, but some of the fix and repair that we do in our operating budget can be allocated out of that?
I would think so.
But we're not doing that now. We're acting like it's a capital expenditure account.
Well, that was, that was the whole intent.
The whole, the whole, the whole intent of it was to create a fund to handle those items that never seemed to make it into annual maintenance. And we didn't have a capital project to do them. They were things that came up from time to time that the towns believed needed to be done to the buildings. What you have to remember is, is when that fund was created and when it was started, there was not a lot of getting that kind of stuff done. It just didn't happen, that's why it was created. But what's happened since is, is that we actually have, we have a director of facilities that's doing a terrific job and things are happening and stuff is getting done and there's less of a need to resort to it. And that, and that's, that's part of what the issue is.
What Bob said is, is true. We had a large bond issue for repairs.
That took care of a lot of those things.
So $500,000 still sitting.
Plus, we also were doing more maintenance, more efficient maintenance. We were actually able to accomplish things on a more efficient basis and they required less money to do it. The net effect is, that fund may build up, it's probably gonna, some of it's gonna probably be expended over the course of the next year, but it may be that we're setting aside more money than is necessary for that task. And we have to think about whether or not it ought to be a further amendment of the lease.
It's a nice feeling though that if, guy, you don't want to see it happen, but if a boiler blows up tonight, you have somewhere to get it.
That's really only two Bruce jobs there, so it's not crazy, two big Bruce. I think it wasn't Bruce, like, too busy or something?
We have heard over and over again how expensive these three schools are to maintain over and over again through the long-range planning process, you know, that was where the whole idea of consolidation had initially come up. So then all of a sudden, these three schools are not as expensive to maintain, so much so that we're not spending capital money and we've got a pile of money sitting. And, uh, I can't imagine that there aren't needs in one or three of those schools to tap into some of that money. It's a little, it's a little mind-boggling, I have to say.
Well, there are, there are needs and the money will be tapped into when it's appropriate. But the other thing you have to remember is, is that that's not the only reason. Having the three buildings with what it costs to maintain it is an inefficient system when you serve as few students as we have.
That's a bigger question.
Which is a much larger question. And, and also, you, you've stated that, well, it was so expensive to maintain them. One of the reasons is, is because of the size of the personnel.
I stated that we were repeatedly told how expensive it is to maintain the three schools.
Well, it's.
Well, considering, considering that at least one of the three schools does manage to, to, to set the record in the state for the most per pupil expenditures because it's not an efficient system. You have very few students and you have fixed expenses.
This is a bigger conversation.
It's a bigger conversation, but this is not the place for it.
When was the last time we used it, do you know?
None.
Has it been since the regional school project?
Five years, $500,000.
We've spent some money out of it, but not a lot of money.
So who's aware that there's money that could be spent? Who's aware that money, there's money out there that could be spent without coming from the.
Well, it's kind of a rainy day.
It's through the lease. The director of facilities is in the schools all the time. He looks at things, he discusses things with the, with the towns. He, he, he makes a list of what needs to be done, he assesses it, deals with it. A lot of that came out of the construction project. A lot of the immediate work came out of the construction project, as Bob said. A lot of it has also come out of the regular maintenance budget. Uh, but the, but the problem was in the past that there was dissatisfaction at the town level with the weather, of the maintenance of the schools. That is no longer the case, they are being maintained. Uh, whether we need that money right now, I don't know. Don and I will be discussing it before the next facilities meeting. We'll probably discuss it at the next facilities meeting.
The question is, was, can these maintenance items be withdrawn out of that account as opposed to tapping the maintenance budget? And so I assume it's gonna be someone.
It's not a straight maintenance.
You don't have any answer tonight, I think.
Well, it's not strictly capital either.
It has to be strictly capital, that's the only way we can, we can roll it over year to year.
How much of air conditioning units, WPS, for the sake? I mean, we have, we have need, we have need of stuff. We just haven't.
We'll be talking about it, we'll get a report back to you at the next business meeting.
Yes, if that, sorry.
Or at the next education.
Hold on, hold on.
I meet with the, um, selectmen every month, every six weeks, so I would invite you, Greg, to join me after you.
Or anyone else.
Or anyone else, uh, to talk to them about the lease because I think they would be very, um, amenable to working this out. I really do. So, once we get the information from the, um, attorney.
We have the information from the attorney, I will go through it, I will try to get the lease put in final form and we'll move on, okay?
Okay, good.
All right.
Thank you.
Jim, may I?
Yes, Val. Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, I'm sorry.
It's dark in here now.
Sorry. It just came from that direction, I figured it might be.
If I can jump back to, uh, to the, to the, um, to the schedule, uh, for the business and ed, uh, education.
The school schedule?
The topic, the Board of Ed meeting topics, January through June. With the referendum date on the map as April 8th, it would be important, would it not, to have some, uh, topic around that time regarding some reflection on the next steps? What happens after, once, uh, once that referendum takes place? So, the, what to do from now?
I know that you raised this topic with the forces and, uh.
Well, now that April 8th is on the, on the, on the map, uh.
I would say that you wouldn't just have that on as an agenda item until after the 8th. But what after the election? Then you could certainly, it certainly should be looked at.
These are just my broad topics. There could be many other topics that go on, onto the, okay?
But this is, you know, this is, this should be, you know? These are subjects to change, so April 21st? I would.
Or if, if May 5th, there was another budget meeting. Oh, that's the, that's the budget meeting, I'm sorry. Yeah, you could do it. Thank you. Well, let's see what happens. Fine, it could be, it'll get it, it'll get it started if we have to get there. Policy, Michelle, any committee report?
Uh, yes, we met, uh, December 16th. Um, we reviewed several policies, um, a couple that we were ready to move to the board, but they're not here tonight because they needed extensive editing and striking out and it was the holidays. Um, we, just to give you an update on our audit that we had over the summer, there were four policies that were mandated but lacking. And one that's on our agenda for tonight is one of them. That will be, that will have addressed two of the four at the board level. All four have been addressed at the policy level and so the draft, new drafts will be coming forward, um, shortly. And tonight's, uh, agenda, the policy that's on the agenda was the mandated one, which, um, got us to the topic. It, 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 we, we realized that, that topic touched several policies, which is why we've had some of the others, it's the alcohol and drug-free workplace. And so it's, it's interesting how inter-related so many of the policies are and if you adjust one, you have to go back and adjust quite a few others. So, so even though we were working on just the four policies from the audit, we've, we've touched at least 12 policies, I think, in the last few months. So, um, yeah, so that's it. And also, I spoke with Ben at CAE today and the, um, we decided in committee that we were gonna go ahead with part of the, um, uh, proposal that he gave us, the, that CAE put together for us in addressing the rest of the policies that needed adjustment. Um, we have 37 policies which have, um, met, need. be amended, and so, uh, advanced him to put together the contract to just, to start with that piece, and, um, we should be getting that soon.
Okay. Thank you. Anything for the show? Sorry, I mean, alcohol, drug-free workplace. Alcohol, drug-free. Awesome. All right, there's no longer a plan or a board. All business?
We have a tabled motion from last time.
All right. Is there a motion with regard to the tabled motion? Um, if you, if you read, for the board, if you look at your minutes that were passed out, motion is December 16th meeting, page two. Hit the bottom.
How do you revise a table from motion?
By motion. If it's seconded, it's voted on. There's no discussion, and it's not reviewable. Alan and I have discussed this.
To untable?
Yes, bring it off the table.
And then you can make the motion to put it?
No, he, the motion would be to bring it off the table. If that's seconded, then the motion is before the board and is voted on.
I'd like to move to...
You know he's on the losing side?
Well, I discussed that, Alan. He's, okay? Mm-hmm. He's raising the point. I, I said that at the last meeting. He made the motion, and I thought he was out of order, quite frankly. But it went, Greg then moved to table it, because this motion has been raised and decided more than once, I believe, and Alan, I thought it was on the losing side. I'm not sure. But in any event, it was tabled. But I was prepared to let Alan proceed with it today. He said that there's been a change of circumstances, which is that the board only recently learned that there will be two votes required, two separate classes of electors, and therefore the vote, the board should be able to reconsider what it did. In other words, Alan's asking that only the, um, plan, only, the, the only question that'd be asked is, shall the regional plan be modified? Period. No spending of any more money for architects or anything to develop a plan. That's what Alan, I think, is trying to do. Is that correct?
Okay.
Or all the way off the table, sorry?
Well, I'm, I'm sorry. I was explaining to Alan what happened. So, yes, I went off the log. Sorry. So, there's a motion to bring it off the table.
I, I made the motion.
Right. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. It's off the table. There's no discussion. So, the motion has set forth in the minutes.
Takes a majority vote. It requires a majority vote. We have to vote on my motion to bring it off the table. Did she second it, or did it just come off?
I seconded it.
No, no, you have to, I'm sorry, you have to vote, have it come off the table. There's no discussion. All those in favor of having it come off the table, raise your hand.
Okay.
All those opposed to having it come off the table, raise your hand. Okay. Any abstentions? The motion's moving off the table.
Can I ask a question, though?
Yes.
That motion, though, can, or a different, or a successor motion, has to come on for our meeting in March 3rd.
What are you talking about?
We are going to pose the questions.
At some point, yes.
For the electorate, two questions. March 3rd is when that would be more agreed on.
Right. Well, March 3rd, we will have the questions from the bond council, from the architect, and with the numbers and the costs. Yes.
Okay.
You will frame the questions.
Then you will frame the questions.
Okay.
Okay.
Two questions, one ballot. Great.
Two questions, one ballot, two voters.
We don't know exactly what it gets.
However, we'll have...
It may need to be two questions.
It has to be, it has to be two questions. The first question is, should the region be amended? The second question is, and it may be two separate questions. There's a plan for the middles, you know, the grammar schools. There's a plan for the middle high school. Either one or that's two separate funding, right? You could have different things, Bobby.
And bond council may suggest...
He's gonna have, bond council has to ultimately approve it, because he's got the authority to put it out. So, he's got to ultimately approve what we do.
And may have the power to suggest a single motion, a single question?
Do you have the power to suggest that, don't you say?
The bond council.
Oh, sure. He'll tell us what we can and can't do. I don't think that, that's, out of my understanding, that should be an issue. They have to be framed as questions that could be answered either yes or no. That's what's suggested.
What is your...
I'm not certain. I don't know. Bond council will allow. I don't need to say that.
Can I ask, what were, what were the grounds that this motion was tabled in the first quarter?
You want to pick a particular motion?
Really?
Sure.
And pass it? That's, that's a great way to operate a board, isn't it?
Well, if there's, it's a motion that's ready, guys.
So, yeah, but you...
Which was passed by a majority of the board.
In other words, you can table any motion that you don't want anybody to vote on, whatever you want, as long as you can get a majority of the board.
I think that that's correct. If there's a motion to table made.
Hey.
Anything else?
Yeah, it's a great way to operate a board. I like that. Stay in the dark.
Then, um, new business. Any other whole business? New business seven-one, to consider appropriate negotiations for bus contracts with All-Star Transportation. Bob?
Could we flip the two, uh, to the annual report first?
Sure.
If you don't mind, because I'm leaving.
Okay. Does anybody have a problem with that, to change the agenda?
No.
From what I've announced. All right. Let's go to seven-two first. Death acceptance of fiscal year 2013 and annual, annual region twelve order report.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any staying? Thank you, darling.
Thank you.
Seven-one, bus contract with All-Star Transportation.
Talk fast, Mike, and stay.
Bob?
The contract is up this year. We, under the provisions of the contract, to do a contract extension, the board can enter into negotiation with the assistant contractor to, to contract the board and bring back same processes and government twice.
When does the current one expire?
It expires June 30, 2014.
What do you suggest the board do?
Then we negotiate a contract with All-Star Transportation, and come back with numbers, and see if we can finish up getting this for another five-year term.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Peter?
How many busing contractors are left? Has been a consolidation?
Around this area, there's, there's two that are active. One, uh, is over in, uh, region fourteen. Um, was here formerly.
Yeah.
And, uh, there is another, um, independent, Hunskey, I think is their name, but they're over in, I remember, over in Plymouth.
Now, do we own the buses, or we lease the buses?
We lease the buses, and then sell them back to the contractor when this is over with. So, right now, these buses will be turned back to the contractor.
The, the other question I have is that it, we've done this before through, obviously, or is it, the only question I would have is, on appearance sake alone, it probably would look better for the board, although we would do this to maybe seek out another bid or two. I mean, it just seems appropriate for a large con, what's the total contract?
It's not that large, Peter, in the scheme of things.
Yeah, about what?
Couple billion dollars.
Yeah.
But it's, again...
So I'm considered that large, I guess.
Well, in a scheme of buses, it's not really a huge number. And what you're going to end up with, from the analysis that I've been doing with existing, um, if, if you go to that method, likelihood is you're going to pay a lot more money. That's the trend. Once you open that indoor's box up, you lose some leverage, and you're dealing with obviously companies who will come in here and drive the price.
Well, the only reason I brought it up is because when you deal with a large sum of money.
I understand, and it's, it's not a bad idea, but it's a unique situation. All stars got the lot right there.
Well, I understand. Do they own the, do they buy the lot and own it?
Oh, yeah.
That was something we had discussed in the past.
So, they own the lot, or they can own, uh, maintenance facilities that...
Didn't they buy the lot from the former busing contractor, though? Isn't that how that happened?
Peter, I don't get into it.
I mean, that's how to deal with it.
I, I don't know all the inner and outer of the town, but...
Well, I'm just saying, in appearance sake for a board, when you deal with large contracts, that, uh, you know somebody in the public's going to bring it up, the selectman or whomever, or finance committee people. So, I'm, I'm bringing it up to the board's attention to see what people are thinking.
Well, the advisor, the opposite by our finance director. So, it will have to decide what wants to do, if anything. There's been a mo, there's been a motion on the table that's been seconded to approve.
Michelle, my turn.
I'm sorry, Michelle, yes.
Just to get at what Peter's talking about, I'm trying to understand exactly why going, putting it out to bid makes our chances of renewing our current contract worse.
I'm just giving you from first hand.
No, I, but, so, so what you're saying is, so this is like an extension, and if we open it up, then we're, I don't understand.
It, it's some re, what ends up happening is, the incumbent will then push the price forward to match the other people that are going to come in to do it. And every time somebody's done this, it's cost them more money.
Okay.
It hasn't, it, it doesn't work the opposite way for some reason, because you have this relationship.
Because it's like an open bidding process, so they know that you've done this, and you can't just go and ask somebody else without All-Star?
Yes, we could. We could certainly insist on bidding.
We could, but my recommendation would be just negotiate this here.
Okay.
Moving forward, as we've done in the past, if it has kept the cost down.
Anything else, Valerie?
I agree with Peter that certainly it would be good to go out, and with Michelle, to go out to bid. But it is an unfortunate situation that we're isolated here. We have a good relationship with the bus company. We know that Bob's going to push the numbers as much as he can. Bus company owns the depot, um, where the buses are kept. Um, it would be great to go out to bid. It just doesn't seem like a, a cost-effective alternative then.
Peter?
One, just small response.
Yeah.
If the busing company lost the contract, most assuredly, they'd sell the property, because there would be no purpose.
It is kind of immaterial. I agree.
So, I'm just saying, on appearance sake for the Board of Education, to have a multimillion dollar contract of any sort, or several hundred thousand dollars, is there a policy that the board is required to go out to bid over and above?
Yes. And this certainly exceeds that, but I don't know if it applies to the bus...
I don't know. I'm only bringing it up for appearance sake.
Well, isn't that, I think that's why Bob is asking us to waive, I mean, that's what this vote is.
Precisely. Yeah, and we, and we have done that in the past.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not pushing it, but I'm just saying, you know, whatever, I'd like to hear from board members. What are they, what are they thinking? Because...
The board, I think, wants to be as efficient as possible.
If we were, if we were having a lot of problems with...
Second that. So, do you trust Bob or not?
If we were having a lot of problems with this contractor, I would push you to get this thing. You don't have those problems.
But I don't believe, though, is if you put it out to bid, that the prices will go up. How could that happen? I mean, they would have to chisard the vessels.
Because they don't have the synergy and the cost.
If they ever lost this?
Huh?
They wouldn't want to lose this little contract.
They wouldn't necessarily want to lose this, but they, Mark would drive it, and he knows that he could get more money at that point.
And we could start.
Because everybody else, you know, infrastructure, you have to start from scratch, and the price goes up.
There's a motion on the table that's been moved.
We still, one more question. We still have to approve whatever's negotiated. Is that correct?
Yes, authorized, intended to go out.
So, if we don't like the number, we can...
Absolutely.
Okay, that's, that's good.
Still has to come back.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any staying? Oh, abstaining, staying.
Okay.
Seven-three, to consider appropriate proof, 2013 through 14 school calendar.
Would like to table that?
Oh, I'm sorry. 2014, 14, 15? Yes.
Oh, oh, we do. That's right. So, that's even if, that's the reason to table.
All right. Well, I'm going to table. You just don't have to act on it.
Seven-four, first reading policy, 411, 8.231, alcohol and drug-free workplace.
I have to break the rules. Thank you.
Um, everyone got a copy in their packet, and Sue did a very nice job of putting changes to strikeouts in red language, so we can see exactly where the differences are. Um, the reason the title changed is, we just, uh, matched it up to the CADE version. It, it made things easier, um, and we just felt that it, it was in compliance. It, it matched the, the student side better as well, so it just kept things more uniform. Um, very little change. The only reason we, we, we started looking at this was the strikeout at the bottom of the page, um, where it said, or during regular school hours, except in designated outside smoking areas. And since we got rid of the smoking areas, we had to update this policy to reflect that. And then, on the last page, you'll see that, um, we just updated the legal writings.
All right. Is there a motion? More questions? I'd like to get a motion. I won't keep hoping for discussion. Looking for approval for, for, for reading first reading, Peter.
I may go to the...
Michelle?
Yes. Looking for a clear motion. Any motion to approve?
First, first reading. Can you have a second? Second gen?
Well, yeah, I, I guess, yeah, I'm a little bit uncertain on this, this change vis-à-vis the, the employee, um...
Where are you?
The, I'm looking at alcohol and drugs. I'm looking at the red exception. And then I'm looking at the provision that says any employee violates the terms of this policy may be required. I guess the words maybe, uh, are what gives you the wiggle room. But if someone were to be prescribed a prescription medication, did not believe it would impair their abilities, and it turns out that it does, they might not know it does, if it impaired them to a sufficient degree. I would hate to see something, you know, taken on that, because the kind of, you know, this kind of situation can occur when someone's being given a whole raft of drugs. For example, if they were being treated for cancer, uh, and they're, and they start treating the symptoms, and then they start treating other things to prevent other things, and you, you get an awful lot of drugs in that process, and they may or may not impair your abilities, but you may not know. Uh, and so, what I'm, I'm concerned about is, is being, having the flexibility, making sure that the policy gives us the flexibility to help this person deal with the situation without putting them into something that triggers a, you know, a personnel issue, or a file issue, or, you know, or some kind of issue like that, when in fact, you know, they don't want to be in that position. They may or may not know the extent to which they're impacted. So...
Are you talking, are you, are you, are you, like, there's anything in my respect that you don't know how it's affecting them?
Well, you know, let me tell you something. Is, if you get treated for a major, heavy-duty disease, uh, like that, uh, you may be given all kinds of medications that, that are involved in pain control and other things. Some of them may impair your abilities, some of them may not. For example, it may impair your ability to drive, but it might not impair your ability to function in certain environments. But you don't know. I mean, you may not know until you actually experience it.
Yeah, but this, this, I think the sense is good. It's definite, and whether the person falls within its ambit in particular circumstance. It does not impair the individual's ability to perform the responsibilities of work, period. That's the test. If it does...
Well, but, but I understand that, but what you wouldn't want, but, but you, but look at what this says. An employee who violates the terms may be required to successfully complete an appropriate rehab program.
Well, that's a man.
And may not be renewed, or his employment may be suspended or terminated at the discretion of the board. I, I'm just saying that you've got to think about that before you jump down the road of saying this is appropriate.
This, this is, that paragraph gives the board the flexibility, or the administration the flexibility, just what you're talking about. Treatment, et cetera, et cetera. Holds appropriate rehabilitation program. Peter?
Did, uh, is it customary for the board, I can't remember going back, that when they do write certain policies, maybe, did they pass it by the board's attorney to, uh, to employ?
On occasion, it's requested. On occasion, it is requested, yes.
Is this the type of policy, when it comes to alcohol and drugs, that you would prefer that the board pass it by the board's attorney for review? I mean, there must be certain policies that are good to pass to the board's attorney, I would think.
Well, this is, um, one of the policies that was mandated. We did a CADE policy update, and this was one of the ones that was mandated that we put in place, and it's based on a CADE model.
Okay.
So, which has been prepared by their lawyers.
Including the language of it.
Okay.
I believe so. Uh, I could double-check that. Um, usually, the only time we send something to our lawyers is if we substantially change a policy. And, and, and I wanted, if I could, to just speak to what Greg was saying. We always, well, we, as a committee, we usually try to make sure that, that the discretion is left to the superintendent or the board, that there's never a prescriptive, um, consequence for anything. And, and I would also like to point out that the way the policy was before, it didn't have the...
And, and I would also like to point out that the way the policy was before, it didn't have the medical exception. So, any control, any controlled substance as defined in Schedules 1 through 4 of Section 202 was illegal. So, we made the medical exception because we figured there might be some medical, you know, there, there might be something that is prescribed by a doctor that's getting caught up in an exclusion there. So, so it's, in essence, it's, it's actually a broader, it's making it, yeah.
So, I will put those questions, Greg, and Michelle, look into. I'd like to know whether that, the only exceptions are, whether that's from the CADE.
Okay, I can look into that.
Any other questions?
Yeah, the other question is whether or not, do we know whether or not, I mean, we, we assume that CADE has vetted this against all things, but the laws on controlled substances are changing. Connecticut has passed a medical marijuana bill. And I don't know whether or not this policy falls within that, the ambit of that, and whether or not they've considered the change in Connecticut's law. How old is this policy? Do we have dates on these things when they come in from CADE? Because that law changed last year.
They update it continuously. So, but the thing is, as soon as we pass a policy, it can be out of date because something new is passed. So, but the audit was, was in July, but when we pull a, when we pull a policy from the website for, as a model, it's the latest version they have. It's not like it's something that's been sitting on their books for 10 years without looking at it. So, it's the most up-to-date that's available, and CADE updates continuously.
Is there anything else? There's a motion on the floor to prove for a first reading. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Right, you notice? Opportunity for the public to comment.
I'd like a point of order, please.
Yes.
We operate under Roberts' Rules of Order?
I tried to. I mean, I'm not.
I mean, is our policy established that we operate under Roberts' Rules of Order?
I couldn't quote it to you.
Yes.
I think.
All right, I'd like to read them to you. Under Roberts' Rules of Order, the subsidiary motion to table does not exist. The two motions with the word "table" included are to lay the topic on the table, to set it aside temporarily while another matter that has arisen is discussed. After the intervening matter is disposed of, the motion that was laid on the table may be renewed by the motion to take from the table. Or not, as the assembly sees fit. The question of matter laid on the table is not permanently disposed of, and there are specific rules regarding adhering motions or pending points of order, which are determined by the parliamentary situation at the time the question was laid on the table. The motion to lay the topic on the table, to cause the topic to lie on the table, is properly used only when it is necessary to suspend consideration of a main notion, motion, in order to deal with another matter that has come up unexpectedly and which must be dealt with before the pending motion can be properly addressed. It has, however, become common to misuse the motion to end consideration of the pending main motion without debate, or to mistakenly assume that its adoption prevents further consideration of the main motion at all or until a specified time. There is no motion to table explicitly stated in Roberts' Rules of Order newly revised. So, the reason is, it states that the use of the motion to table to kill a motion is improper because a majority vote should not be sufficient to permanently cut off debate on a main motion.
It wasn't, that wasn't done to kill or to cut off. We dealt with it tonight. It's reconsidered tonight.
It wasn't reconsidered tonight. It wasn't pulled off the table tonight. To be reconsidered, was it?
Well, that failed.
Correct. It shouldn't have been put on the table at all because to table does not exist.
Well, I don't.
I mean, I can make an, you know, I could call a parliamentary order to solve, you know, remove our shirts, but it doesn't exist in Roberts' Rules, so I can't make that pass, can I?
You can't make that pass.
Whatever motion I'd like to make as a, you know, motion to table, I can make this motion to have this meeting.
I wonder that there is a motion to table, and it lays on, and as long as it's.
Okay. So, you'll find that out next time at the next meeting. We'll discuss about the fact that it doesn't exist in Roberts' Rules. Whether you know, I believe it.
Charge you with that.
Yeah, because this, you know, I really, the more I thought about it, the fact that we can just table our motions with a majority, whenever we don't feel like.
There is such a procedure under Roberts' Rules.
I don't think you're going to find that.
And we had, after the motion to table was granted, we had a hearty discussion, I thought, you know.
No.
Yes, there were a lot of things that were said after the motion to table was passed, and you just, you know.
You can't talk about things after a motion is tabled.
Well, we did. You talked at length. You know, go back and look at it. We all, a lot of folks had a lot to say. So, I thought it was proper. And you have a chance to bring it off the table tonight. It's my understanding you did it correctly.
All right, but it wasn't, it wasn't allowed to go on the table because that motion doesn't exist.
Your point of order is taken. Anything else?
I'm glad the lawyers here are so completely unaware of this issue.
We'll check it out. Opportunity for the public to comment on the agenda items. Anyone wants to address this? Okay. See, no one? No executive session tonight? Is, is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
Michelle, second. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed?